Okay, it's seven o'clock. I would like to call this meeting to order. Everybody would stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Okay, Mary Kay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Dave Ardo.
Here.
Trina Borneman. Dr. Noel Leif. Jill Maddick Nelson. Kristin Matt Miller.
Here.
Danny Poyet.
Here.
Angie Schreiber.
Here.
JD Schrader.
Okay, before we go on into the meeting, I do, I'd like to call our meeting to a moment of silence in honor of Dr. Julie Sprague's family, losing her dad just recently. That's the reason that she is out today. I talked with her over the weekend. So if we can just have a moment of silence in honor and reverence to Dr. Sprague and her family, that would be great, please. Okay, our thoughts and our prayers do go out to Dr. Sprague and her family in this time of sorrow, and our condolences go to the family as well. Thank you for that respect for Dr. Sprague. I'll remind everybody tonight that we are here to take care of the business of the Unified School District of Annago through the agenda that's been printed and posted. And if you are going to be speaking, I'll ask that you come to the microphone and speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you, and the recording can take place as well. Leave all sidebar comments off to the side, and we will get along with business tonight. We'll limit our public comments to five minutes per person, and Mary Kay will be taking care of the timekeeper for those speeches as you are talking this evening. Having said that, we will go to item number two, letter A, introduction of the 2022-2023 student representatives.
Well, I don't know if I'm tall.
It'll pick you up, I'm sure, Eva.
Is that good? Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Ava Tatro. I am a junior, and of course, I go to the Annago High School. My interests are spending time with family and friends. I like writing, and I like listening to music. And then for my future goals, I plan to graduate in the spring of 2024, and then I plan to go out of state for college and become a travel nurse.
Hi, I'm Lucy Slominski. I'm a junior at the Annago High School. I'm also hoping to graduate in the spring of 2024. I'd like to go to UW Madison and continue my education further to become a lawyer someday. My interests contain hiking, playing volleyball, and I also like reading.
Okay, and then for the events that we have coming up in the following month of October, we have homecoming, which is a big deal to every single one of our grades. So Sunday, October 2nd, we have Stud Spike that runs from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Potter Puff. Okay, yeah, Potter Puff, and then we have Community Assembly at 6:00. Then the Potter Puff Championship and Boys Dance is also during the assembly.
And then the rest of the week, on Monday, it's, we have dress-up days every week, or every day of the week. So on Monday, it's pajama day, and there's hallway decorating from 6:00 to 8:00. So all the grades will be here decorating their hallway. And then on Tuesday, it's Dress as Your Genre Day, because we're doing music genres as our homecoming theme. And it's the staff versus the champion Stud Spike team game during homeroom that day. Alrighty, Wednesday, we have USA Day. Not gonna lie, I have some great pants to wear that day. Then on Thursday, it's your class color day. So seniors, black; juniors, white; sophomores, blue; freshmen, gray; eighth grade, red; and then staff is tied. And then Friday is Annago Beer Day, and then we also have an assembly and then the parade where our full student is presented.
What time's the parade, Eva?
Four.
Okay.
And then Saturday, we also have the Homecoming Dance. It starts at 7:30 p.m., not in the morning. And it's in the comments. That's all we got for you guys. Any questions?
I just want to say to Eva and Lucy, welcome aboard. We're glad to hear from you each month as to what's going on in the in the student body here at the high school throughout. Be back at Crestwood Elementary, so you've grown a lot over the years. Lucy, I look forward to getting to know you a little better as well over the next few months. Absolutely.
Well, thank you guys so much.
Thanks so much. Welcome aboard. Good job on that report. Letter B, public comment. Mary Kay, we have nobody assigned in. Moving right ahead to...
Danny.
Oh, yes, Andy. Thank you so much. Andy has a report that he wants to give out to get us ready for budget cycle through the legislative reports.
Just some comments.
Just to get us ahead.
September 7th, there's a letter in the Milwaukee Journal. It's titled, "Let's Change Wisconsin School Funding System to Make It More Equitable for All Districts." And this letter was endorsed by President Pyatt, John Geier of the AEF, and Chad Towbridge of, I think, Business Director in Eau Claire. And it's dealing with the inequity in the levies, school levies. And so I just did this little thing for CISA 9, and in CISA 9, there's five districts that have, are at a minimum levy, like we are, at $10,000. Nine districts between $10,000 and $11,000, and the rest of the districts are entitled to more money than that. And setting up with something to send them relatively soon.
So in light of that, Andy, I'd like for the chairman of, chairmans of all of the standing committees to have on their agenda coming up in the next couple of weeks, the biennial budget, where you can review that and talk about that on your committee level. And then we will collectively talk to Tim and draft a letter representing what we believe and what we feel from the Unified School District of Annago. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, so we know, Mary Kay, that will be on the, on the addendums for the committee meetings. Go ahead.
One more thing, JD's not here tonight. JD and I always kind of have our own book club going, and we would welcome anybody else to be reading with us. And this is the latest book that JD gave me. It's How to Educate a Citizen by Edie Hirsch. And I don't know how many of you have read other books of Edie Hirsch's, but he's certainly got his own philosophy on how we should be educating kids. And so if you'd like to join us, I think you can just call JD, and he'd be happy to talk to you about this book.
Sure.
Get you fired up.
Absolutely.
I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for that information. Moving right ahead to item three, consent agenda, letter A. I'll be looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda, minutes, and financial reports.
I move the board to approve the agenda minutes, the agenda minutes from August 22nd, 2022, Board of Education meeting, financial reports for August 2022, consideration of current bills, tax numbers 6127 through 6224 in the amount of $367,929.58. ACH is number 222300126 through 222300242 in the amount of $1,023,413.66, and one wire transfer in the amount of $24,603.73 for a total of $1,415,946.97.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded in stereo. Roll call vote, please.
Ardo?
I will vote yes, but I will abstain on check number 6191.
Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Matt Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Pyett?
Yes. And the motion carries. Number four, new business, letter A, new marching band uniforms presentation. I spoke with Mr. Kaple today, and this Saturday, there is competition at Chippewa Falls, and they're getting all the practice in that they can between now and Saturday, so tonight, they're actually at Schofield Stadium practicing. We will have them to come in and model their new uniforms. I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have seen those new uniforms already, as they have already been on the field during football games. But they will be coming in next month for our meeting. But he did ask me to mention that he was going to talk about the marching band Fall Showcase, and he said, "Can you give these flyers to the board members?" So there you go. This coming Friday, September 30th, at 6:00 o'clock at Schofield Stadium. The mission is a donation. All the proceeds are going toward the trip to California later on this year for the Rose Bowl Parade. We're gonna have all sauce stuff food truck there, and the band will be performing. There'll be also, there are other things going on. I don't want to mention anything because I'm not 100% sure on all of it. But you want to come and be a part of that and support our marching band going to Pasadena, California later this year. So on behalf of Austin, thank you so much. Letter B, Noboken Presentation.
I should do this. I'm telling her that, Eva. All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Rio. I teach here at the high school. I teach biology, and have also been heading the School Forest Committee for a number of years. And this is Faith Newman, who hired last year as our School Forest Coordinator. And today, we'd like to just give you a little update on what's happening at our School Forest with our School Forest program, because it's gonna have been a year since we really made a big leap forward, so. Dustin, if you could jump ahead slide? Does it gonna come up there? No?
It's not working out. I'm sorry.
We're sorry. We have slides behind you. Sorry about that. Needed a little exercise anyway, right? Okay, so as, as I'm sure you're aware, last fall, we opened our new School Forest facility up at Noboken Lake. And so it's been a year since we've been into that program, and we were fortunate last fall to hire Faith as our coordinator. So that program is up and running. We kind of want to let you know what is going on and what are some of our future plans or goals that we have for that. So last year, when we hired Faith, we kind of set a three-year plan for the coordinator. Our goal for her and the program last year was to make sure that our elementary students through grade five all got to the School Forest at least twice during the year, and to develop the curriculum and lessons that go along with that. This year, the goal is to add 6th through 9th grade to that, along with, again, curriculum and lessons, to also increase teacher involvement. Last year, a lot of it fell on Faith to do the presenting and just about everything, but we want to try to get our teachers more involved in the actual teaching lessons while they're there. And then also, just start exploring more community use of the facility and also more public programs. And then next year, the goal will be to make sure all of our students through high school are utilizing the School Forest more, and also to then increase and implement some community programs and other community use. And then also to start looking into other funding for future use, grants and other opportunities that might be out there for future funding opportunities. So at this time, I'm gonna let Faith explain what actually happened in the first year, so she can have an idea of what's going on and what it'll continue this year to build off of.
I'm just gonna do this. Work smarter, not harder. So hi, my name is Faith Newman, and I am the School Forest Coordinator here for the Annago School District. Last year, September 18th, we opened our building. We held a ribbon ceremony, a ribbon cutting ceremony. And from September 18th to June 3rd, we had 52 days that were spent out at the forest between our district. I was able to get 4K through 3rd and 5th grade out, not only twice, but three times. Grades 4, and we added on 6, came out twice, and even high school students came to visit us. We did host some community events as well, so we met and beat our goal. Now I'm just gonna go through some photos to make us all feel good about our little ones that we teach every day here in our district. With 4K, it's a lot of play, I'm not gonna lie to you. It's a lot of play, but we do talk about shapes, and we do read books, and we do do some science and art, and we do a lot of running around, so. This is an activity I did today with some four-year-olds, actually, but this picture's from last year, where they get to make their own, I don't, door decorator. I put mine on my door, but they take the first letter of their name, and they pick up all the leaves off the ground. It's pretty cute. And here we have them just exploring and looking. So moving on to kindergarten, we do get some language arts in there, science, physical education, art, and environmental education. Pictured, they're learning about different types of weather, and then also you incorporate the movement into it. They also got the opportunity to adopt a tree at the School Forest, because all of our students will get to go there every single year. So these students now will be in first grade, and they'll come out, and if they happen to remember the tree, I hope they do, then they can check in on that tree and see how it's doing, giving them a sense of belonging at the forest. I want them to feel comfortable outside in nature. And of course, we just have some fun activities, making birds feeders and whirlybirds. So with first grade, we're getting more into some social studies, science, also once again, physical education, environmental education, and some language arts. They learn the difference between a deciduous tree and a conifer, or a needle tree and a leaf tree. They also get to explore and learn about different types of pollinators and insects, so the first big picture you see is, I call it the bee's knees, and there's okra on their knees, and they have to try to pick up pollen, and it's a pretty fun game. And then we also explore finding animals, where they go into groups with jars, and when I say animals, it's mostly just worms. But they get the chance to explore outside and dig around. This was just a cute craft where they made their own insect, and I did go to breakfast one morning and see a little girl with a clip in her hair of an insect she had made. With second grade, we're gonna focus more, it's mostly science and environmental education. They do learn about animals, thanks to our Annago High School students in Mr. Rudio's class. They'll come out in Wildlife Management. And on the next slide, you will get to see some pretty funny pictures, I'm pretty sure. Not funny yet. But so we have high school students teaching different, our younger students, so giving leadership to our older students, and teaching about the things they care about to our younger ones, but we also do get art and physical education in for second grade. And here you'll see a student dressing up with the different features that a beaver has, big webbed feet and waterproof skin. With third grade, we did get some math in there. It's called graphing animal, and we go out and try to find animals, and every time they find one, well, at the end, we'll take the data and make a bar graph. We do do science, environmental education, and art. And these are just from recess, and the kids were having fun. They also got the chance to learn all about owls and dissect owl pellets. I'll have, you know, all the fourth graders came last week, and they asked me, "Miss Faith, are we dissecting anything today?" And some were excited, and others were like, "Please, no." With our fourth grade friends, we did, we just did it, but it's a lot of the Ice Age Trail, and we can go to the next one. We do get social studies, science, environmental education, physical education. So the Ice Age Trail Alliance, we are an Ice Age Trail community here in Annago, Wisconsin. So they have a guest speaker come and give a presentation, and we're located right next to the Ice Age Trail by Jack Lake there. So they come and they hike the Ice Age Trail with us, just teaching us all about the different geography that the glaciers had formed. And then in the springtime, we incorporate a lot of Wisconsin's state history and our state symbols. Just because that's a big curriculum thing for fourth grade is learning about our state. Fifth grade, we science, social studies, art, and job exploration. The biggest thing with fifth grade, and it's been a tradition before I was even here, and it is called Logging Day, where we actually have loggers from our area come with a timber harvester and harvest trees in front of the students. We also try to get somebody from a paper mill to come and talk about what their job is like. And then we also invite the DNR over, so they can help teach kids how to manage a forest, and then also just allow them, if you want to work outside, these are a few different outlets you could pursue when you're a little older.
Great, thank you, Faith. And so one thing that really struck me as Faith was speaking is that environmental education really is an infused curriculum. We don't necessarily teach environmental education, other than at the high school, when they're kind of really getting into that elective area where they're very interested in that. But all levels of students from 4K through 12th grade, it's infused into your other classes. So you saw math, you saw social studies, you saw science, you saw everything up there. So environmental ed really is infused in, and allowing the kids to go to the School Forest and use that facility and be out in nature really adds to that experience for them. I'd like to continue just quickly here, yet we still have a forest, School Forest Committee. Before, you know, we had the new facility and before we had a coordinator, our School Forest was utilized minimally, but it was utilized, and that's because we had a committee of teachers, administrators, and community members who met regularly to try to provide opportunities for teachers to take their kids to the, to the forest. It wasn't like there was anybody there like we have now to kind of lead the programs, but if a teacher was interested, facility was there, and we tried to provide good things for them to, for them to do and give them support. We felt once, now that we have a coordinator, we still need a committee that is kind of an oversight of the School Forest to help take off some of the noneducational things that Faith would do. She's really focusing on the curriculum and the lessons and the teaching and all that, where the School Forest Committee is gonna focus still on, you know, developing policies for the School Forest, working on community involvement, the facility type end of things, fundraising, all that sort of stuff. So we continue to meet once a month and in between when we need to. We have a good group of community members right now that are part of our committee, which has been helpful, and that's a little growing area. People are getting more interested, and we have teachers from all levels and also some administrators part of the committee as well. Our current projects right now are really focusing on finishing up our public use policy, so if somebody wants to use the facility, we have a policy in place, and it's like 95% done, so I think you're gonna see it next month at your committee meeting and then hopefully approval. We are working on additional trails, and now that we have the shelter kind of on the opposite end of where our old shelter was, we kind of need to reroute kind of how we use our property, and we'd like to build one new trail from the old property to the new property. Kind of right now, it's a long way around, a little shortcut. So we're working with some planning on that, and we'd want to really improve the signage and maps of the whole forest, because it's not really, not really mapped real well right now, or people get a little lost sometimes, so we gotta be careful. So that's kind of our plans for this year. Our future needs, we're really looking at, we really want to develop a more of a patio outdoor classroom area. So like we have picnic tables, they're kind of sitting on the grass, and now it gets muddy, and we'd really like to make that a little bit more of a, like a patio with, you know, patio blocks and that sort of thing. We really want to get access down to the lake. The steps down to the lake right now are kind of old and uneven and not really safe. And really, anything we do should be ADA accessible, so. We have a, we have a plan that was engineered for us, but the cost is a lot. So until we find some funding, we have to kind of hold off on that a little bit, but that's really a goal we have. And then just really improving all of our trails for safety and ADA accessibility, there'll be some future things that we continue to work on. Okay, Dustin. So back to the slide I had up earlier, I think we need to really commend Faith for her first year of really going above and beyond that goal we set. As she said, all of the grades are out there even more than two times a year, and 6th grade joined in. We had a number of high school classes that, that came out, so I think that was great on her part, and we're looking forward to what happens in the next couple of years. Finally, last slide here. We'd just like to invite you, public, as well as school board. We have two events coming up that you might want to be, think about. Next Saturday, October 1st, we're having an open house at the School Forest from 1:00 to 4:00. It's really just for anybody to come out. If you haven't seen the facility, it's a great time to check that out. If it's a great fall day, you might want to walk the trails. We're gonna have a few activities for kids to do. We have like a storybook trail and anything, so if you just want to come explore and see what it's all about, next Saturday, 1:00 to 4:00. And then more for a school board, if you really want to see kind of things in action, Tuesday, October 18th, is our fifth grade logging day. Now, this is something we've been doing for quite a few years. It's a big public event where we have a logger come out and demonstrate the logging process, as well as, like Faith said, we have some DNR employees, we have the county foresters, we have somebody come out and show us how logs are milled into boards, and they go through stations, and it's really a neat day. All of our fifth graders go, and then we also have a period of the day where we have high school kids come out, and they do it at high school level. So we're planning that for Tuesday, October 18th, and the rain date on that would be the 19th, so that you could come out really anytime during the day, 8:30 to 2:00. I'm sure you'd see something going on, so if you want to check it out, that'd be great. And then Faith, just wanted to mention other opportunities.
Absolutely. So lastly, if you can't make it to the October 18th, school board, we do, I do have a School Forest calendar that is on Google Calendar, and it is open to the public at this point, but I have no problem sharing that link to you, and then if you wanted to come out, whether it was a third grade, second grade, or any field trip day, and see what, what a day at the forest is like, or even an hour, you're more than welcome to. So if you're interested, I could send that link out to you after this meeting.
Yes, please.
Absolutely. I can send it to all of you, and that's all I, that's all I wanted to add.
I think that's it. So thank you for your time tonight, and I thank you for the support that you've given in the past, and look forward to your continued support in the future.
All right.
Any questions at all?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does Katie ever talk about having a park or school?
Like a charter school?
I guess it could be a charter school, yes.
We have not. We know they're out there though.
And for those of you that don't know Faith that well, I was fortunate enough to be at the welcome back day along with some of the board members, and her enthusiasm is very minimal tonight, because that day, her enthusiasm was all over the board. And I'm telling you, the kids love her, and also, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say that you developed all of the curriculum last year?
Yes.
So all the pictures and the curriculum that we saw was developed through her, not from another source. So thank you so much for all that you've done so far, meeting those goals, exceeding those goals. There was one need or want that wasn't up there that I did pick up on that day, and that is playground equipment. So we need to add playground equipment to that list of needs and wants.
There's a much longer list of needs and wants, but those are the key words up there for today, so. Anything else? Awesome. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, moving ahead to item C, Annago High School FFA report. This is Donkey. Do we have a presentation too?
Yes, we do have another presentation.
Thank you.
All right, welcome, everyone. My name is Shalyn Donkey. I am the agriculture instructor here at Annago High School, and I'm also the Annago FFA advisor. With me, I have my student teacher. This is Noah Bestel. He is from UW River Falls, and he will be with me until January. And then I have Nick Bostwick. He is currently our FFA parliamentarian. And I have Allison Niskovjak. She is currently our secretary. So if, for those of you who don't know what Annago FFA or what FFA is, it no longer stands for Future Farmers of America. It hasn't since 1984. And our mission, this is kind of what I say to people when they ask me, I always say that we are advocating for the agriculture industry, as well as we're developing premier leadership skills. So we'd like to chat about what we've been doing the last few months. All right, so here is our current officer team. So I'll just go over it really quick. Our president is Ellie Stank, who's currently a senior. Vice president is Mia Schuffer. She's a sophomore. You already met our secretary, Ellie Niskovjak, who is also a sophomore. Treasurer is Morgan Rank, who is a senior. Reporter, Brooklyn Bender, who is also a senior. Sentinel is Nick Wild, who is also a senior, and our parliamentarian, who you've already met, Nick Bostwick, who's a sophomore. And like I said, I am the advisor, and then my student teacher is also learning to be an advisor this semester.
Hi, I'm Nick Bostwick. I am the parliamentarian. At Officer launch this year, we went up to the School Forest, the old building. We did a lot of team bonding activities. We did our POA. Yeah, the campfire was fun up there. It was interesting. And all of our Jack Lake adventures. Thank you.
All right, so in the beginning of June, there was nine other members and I that went to state convention in Madison, and we attended two workshops each day. One of my favorites was the One of my favorites was the auctioneer, we got to learn how to be an auctioneer.
And I'll follow up with a couple of other things that happened at our state convention. So we actually had a state finalist for employment skills, Marissa Tex. So she was our district winner and then she was also our sectional winner. And then Marissa went up against nine other sectional winners in the state and she placed second. So she was second to the being state champion, so we were very proud of her. And then we had five state degree recipients and a state degree is the highest honor you can get in the state. And so I'm very proud that I had five seniors at our state degree this year. That is also a requirement for the courts. So students can earn FFA courts if they apply for their state degree. So I had seven students apply and five earned their state degree, but seven didn't walk with courts, so I'm very proud of that. And then like she said, we had some attendees and these are some pictures of our fun, a tradition that I do is I take them to Nitty Gritty, which is a great experience if you've never been to Madison, it's kind of fun. We also went to the zoo, that's the selfie there. The zoo was quite entertaining, so that was a little bit of our state convention. Okay, due to a schedule change with the swim team, my, two of my three that attended Washington Leadership Conference are at their swim meet tonight, so they all wrote on behalf that they wanted to share their experience. So Morgan Rank, Brooklyn Bender, and Maya Boulder, who are currently seniors, attended this last July. And so Washington Leadership Conference is a national conference where students from all over the nation gather weekly. And so they went in July, one of the weeks in July. So I'll just read on behalf of this, of each of them. So this is on behalf of Morgan Rank. This summer, two other FFA members and I took the opportunity to go to Washington Leadership Conference. This opportunity gave us the chance to talk to Wisconsin FFA members the whole way to Washington DC and talk to other FFA members from all over the US the rest of the week. WLC taught every member there that we might not think were strong independent leaders, but truly inside, everyone will eventually have the opportunity to be the leader that they want themselves to be. Through the week, we saw many memorials in DC and learned about the history and leadership roles that the important past leaders of the US had to take part of to get to us where the country is today. We were taught that even if these individuals didn't truly believe that they were leaders, we wouldn't be where we are today. WLC taught every FFA member who attended that even if we come from a small and little hometown, we can still make a difference if we step up to be the leaders we are. I met many people in that short week that I would have never met if I didn't go. Meeting people from all over the US and not just from the little Wisconsin can change your perspective about how other people live their everyday lives from different states. WLC changed my perspective on FFA, leadership roles, and everyday life. I am very grateful for the experience in which every FFA member could experience it. Okay, this is on behalf of Maya Boulder. My name is Maya Boulder and I attended the Washington Leadership Conference in July. While I was there, I learned how I can be a leader and give back to my community. We packed meals for people in need around the area. One of the things that I will never forget is all the people I met from all over the country and seeing how their FFA chapter helps them in their community and state. Through FFA, I have learned many valuable skills such as public speaking, how to do a job interview, planning events, and managing money. I am grateful for all the opportunities FFA has given me. And finally, on behalf of Brooklyn Bender, going to Washington DC with FFA was a life-changing experience. I met so many different people and made so many memories, all with people that I would have never met without this trip. This trip was not only all about FFA, it showed me a glimpse of what college would be like or what I assume would be like, would be like by sharing a room with three other girls I have never met before and them being from completely different states. We did lots of activities like team bonding with our community groups and large dance parties with the whole group of over 300 other kids from around the United States. Other than team bonding, we also did community service projects that were eye-opening to me, like packaging over 1,700 prepackaged breakfast bags for the community. I also got to go to many places and see many things that I would have never gotten to see if I was, if it wasn't for this trip. And so to explain some of these pictures, far left is the Wis, all the Wisconsin students that attended that week. The middle is all 300 FFA members that attended that week's session. And then the right is my three students that I sent in front of the reflection pool. And this trip is funded by our, not only by our Anago FFA, but also by our Anago FFA alumni and supporters. So that's completely funded by the students and our community supporters. Okay, my apologies, this was not the original or the final one, but that's okay. So we can share that all out with you so you can see our final. Really close, really quick, I attended the Wisconsin Association of Agriculture Educators Conference in June and Mr. Bestel actually attended as well. I just wanted to share real quick, I got my five-year award for being five years in ag education and I got to go to a cranberry bog. And if you think cranberries grow in water, they do not. I taught that to my students this morning. And I'd like Mr. Bestel to share what else he learned.
So I attended the new teacher workshop, even though I'm still student teaching. They convinced me to attend that where I learned a lot about how to negotiate contracts and other things that beginning ag teachers really struggle with, so time management. I also learned a lot about bees, honeybees.
All right, so and finally, we just want to say thank you. We know you approve our overnight trips and there's one on the docket tonight, so we greatly appreciate everything and we are going to extend an invitation we do have to our school board members. We do have November 7th, we have dinner with our FFA alumni and supporters as well as our parents will be attending. I'll send out an official invite, but if you just want to mark your calendars, you're all welcome to come and you're welcome to bring your families for those of you who have young children. My children will be there. So we just want to say thank you and my students have a little treat for you as well that I got on my trip that I bought for you. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. How does, how is it determined what students go to Washington DC?
Washington DC?
Yeah, how do you determine?
So there is an application. So I send students who are going to be juniors or going to be seniors, but they need to be in my agriculture class because that is a national FFA rec, uh, expectation. So that is not Mrs. Domke rule, which some students feel. National FFA requires that you are in an ag education class because we are not extracurricular, we are intracurricular. I can give a presentation someday on that, so you have a better understanding of our role. But then if they are currently in a class and then they are active in FFA, so participating in activities, coming to meetings, going to other leadership conferences. It's all three students that attended. They were actually on the schedule. I have a few students who didn't get to attend because of our past history of COVID, so fortunately this year I was able to send three. Sometimes it's timing, sometimes it's a lot of things.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Always great to hear the good things that's going on with our students. Letter D, Third Friday Attendance Report, Mr. Prunty.
Okay, first of all, I want to give a little shout out to both the building secretaries. Stephanie Parker from Central Office takes all that Third Friday information and she hands it over to me and then Mary Kay is responsible for doing all the open enrollments, tracking kids that are doing homeschooling, all of that. So it takes a real team effort. The information you're looking at, we just got finished this afternoon looking at Friday's data. And enrollment is still changing across the state and those open ins and opens outs still affect us. So this date, this data is dated last Friday. It's the most current that we have, it's likely going to change. The report is due to DPI this Friday, so we'll shore it up between now and then. So what I'd like you to do is focus on what I'm going to call my left. And you can see the difference between last year's open enrollment, the top is open enrollment out and then the bottom portion is open enrollment in. And you can see where the students are going. And then when you look at the bottom, you can see the distribution by grade level. Questions on the left side of the document? So then let's take a look at the right side. So there are, there are implications to the budget and that's really my focus and why I want to try to get the numbers accurate. Because we feed these numbers into the revenue limit formula and then that determines essentially our revenue limit. We subtract state aid and then we assign levy. And any discrepancies that we make in our enrollment count affect next year's levy going forward. So it's important that we get the information as accurately as we can. So what you see in the first two columns over on the right-hand side, I'm comparing the actual number of students from one year to the next. And we're looking at, the, the top section would be Anagos enrollment. We have kids though that are coming into Anago and we have kids that are open enrolling out of Anago. So I'm showing the open enrollment on those two, those two situations. But the revenue limit formula and our aid formula don't work on count, they work on FTE. So we take our enrollment count and we change it to FTE based on grade level. So our early childhood counts for 50% and our 4K counts for 60% of a full-time student. So those numbers there are converted. And then you can see then if we go down, so essentially as of last Friday, we had 182 kids open enrolling out. We had 47 kids open enrolling in and you can see the FTE impact on that. Then of course, there's always a budget implication and here's where, this is something I'm tracking because when you're looking, so Dustin, if you slide down a little further on that, that sheet, you can see when we look at our open enrollment out, there's a couple of numbers there. So the tuition expense between one district and another is $8,224 this year. And special education for our special education students is $13,076 in and out. So we look at our Third Friday count, we count those number of kids, we convert it to FTE and then you can see it's over 1.5 million going out and 330, uh, 399,000 coming in for a net budget negative of over 1.1 million dollars. We, like I said, by the finance committee next week, we'll have, in two weeks, we'll have that all shored up and we'll have actual numbers because right now I'm, I'm really building that budget for the, for the hearing later in the month. Questions?
Okay, thank you, Tim, for that report. Moving on to item letter E, disclosure of administrative salary increases as approved on June 28, 2022. The reason these next two items are on the agenda is due to the fact that we had a board member that asked the results of the voting that took place in closed session. And I went to Dean Dietrich, our school board attorney, questioned him as to how this process would work on the information coming out from the board. He informed me that because we do roll call vote of in closed session, we can reveal in open session how the vote was, how the vote transpired, so we don't come out and say unanimous. We come out and we will say the vote went however way the vote took place. Furthermore, if a board member wishes to say who voted how, Mr. Dietrich also said, since we do roll call vote, we can also disclose that information in open session as to who voted how. So having said that, and it's taken some time for Dean and I to come together on this, not so much, it's just our calendars of getting together, but he got all the information to me, so I'm going to ask Mary Kay if she will read the report from the closed session that took place and approved on June 28, 2022.
This is for the administrator's salary. Excuse me. Motion by Schrader, second by Mary, to approve the administrator's salary increase as presented by the district administrator. The following voted yes by roll call vote. Matic Nelson, Mary, Schrader, Bornham and Deep. The following voted no by roll call vote. Matt Miller, Schreiber, Barto and Pyatt. Five, four, motion carried.
And the results of that, if you will read the list that was, that's attached in here, Mary Kay, because that is information that the board member had asked in open comment.
You want each name as the, as it's up there?
Yes, yes, please.
Crane, 4.7%. Dambs, 4.71%, excuse me, Dambs, 4.71%. DeBoer, 4.71%. Jensen, 4.71%. Katza, 4.71%. Leiderman, 4.71%. Matic, 4.71%. McCann, 4.71%. Morong, 4.71%. Panasek, 4.71%. Prunty, 4.71%. Ryan, 5%. Rogers, 2%. Schofield, 6.50%. Seibert, 4.71%. Smith, 4.71%. Tassler, 5%. Zamzo, 2%.
Okay, so that was what the board member had requested that was voted upon on June the 28th, 2022, according to the minutes that was taken from that meeting. Moving along to item F, disclosure of superintendent salary incre, increase as approved on July 14, 2022. Mary Kay, if you will read that, please.
The following voted yes to the amended motion giving the district administrator a 3% salary increase for 2022, 2023. Matic Nelson, Mary, Schrader, Bornham and Deep. The following voted no by roll call vote. Matt Miller, Schreiber, Barto and Pyatt. Five, four, motion carried.
And you see on the screen behind us that it was voted by the majority to give Dr. Sprague a 3% increase. So that, that will satisfy the question as to what took place in that closed session. And then in the future, closed session items, the only thing that is not disclosed is disciplinary procedures for students or staff or if there is litigation going on or the purchase or sale of property. Those are the only things that is not disclosed from closed session. Everything else, when we come out of closed session, back into open session, will always be revealed from henceforth going forward. Okay. Item letter G, the finance committee report. Dr. Barto.
The finance committee met.
Can you wait just one second? Let me have a motion to approve the minutes from the September the 6th finance committee meeting.
Also move.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and second? Okay, Dr. Barto.
The finance committee met on the day after Labor Day. I was present along with Joe Matic Nelson and Danny Pyatt. Committee member Dr. Noel Deep was absent and administration present was Dr. Julie Sprague and Tim Prunty. There was no public comment. Under new business, Tim presented the August year-to-date financial report to the committee and this item was included in tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Prunty also provided a detailed explanation of all the individual grants that the district manages. Then we had a fund balance discussion. Tim reviewed the unaudited results of the June 30th, 2022 fund balance allocation with a total fund balance in Fund 10 of $7,369,207.84 with total preliminary expenditures for 2023, 2020, 2022, 2023 school year of $30,592,652. He noted that the district is in a good spot going into this school year. He's asking the board to classify the cash balance of the HRA account as a committed fund balance. The purpose of the funds is to be used for current and future HRA expenses and that is on tonight's agenda. Our next finance committee will be Monday, October 3rd at 6 o'clock.
Okay, any questions about the finance committee report? Hearing no questions, all in favor of accepting the finance committee report as read by Dr. Barto, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then it carries. Letter H, Curriculum Instruction Committee Report, Joe.
Do you need a motion first?
Yes, I need a motion, please.
I move the board approve the September, September 6, 2022 curriculum and instruction committee meeting. The committee minutes, excuse me.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Joe, you can move forward. Joe, you can move forward.
Okay. Curriculum and Instruction Committee also met on Tuesday, September 6th because of the holiday on Monday. Committee members that were present include myself, Dr. Bardo, and J.D. Schrader. The administration president, Dr. Sprague, Amy Doms, and Clint Rogers. And then President Pyatt was also present as a board member. There was no public comment. Under new business, Mr. Rogers presented on the dual credit agreement shared between the district and our Central Technical College. He noted the dual credit courses are taught by district staff using NTC curriculum and students then have the possibility to earn college credit upon completion of the course at no cost to them. The 2022, 2023 dual credit agreement will be considered for action tonight at the board meeting. It was noted there was no changes to that agreement, correct?
There are no changes to the agreement, there's some change in the classes that are offered.
And changes would reflect the teacher credential or credential, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So the list of courses that are offered under the agreement, there's some where we don't have teachers that are credentialed to teach a class currently under the dual credit requirements through NDC in the curriculum. But we do offer them. It's also noted by Ms. Doms that given the size of our district, we offer a lot of dual credit courses that is often complemented by other districts for the number of courses that we offer. Then, under curriculum cycle update, Ms. Doms provided an explanation of the curriculum review process and a tenured subject area curriculum revision cycle. So this was really, I want to say intense or overwhelming to visually look at, but she did a wonderful job breaking it down and explaining it. To kind of paint a picture of what the district is working towards and what to expect by year in terms of, I don't have it in front of me or visually to explain, how we look at changes in the standards that come from DPI in year one. Correct me if I get any of this wrong because I really studied it to best understand it. Years two and three, understanding what we don't have for resources based off of the changes and what resources we currently have with any changes in the standards. And then year four-ish, years three to four is assess and implement. So going through the standards, what do we have, what do we need? And then year five is utilizing those resources to fidelity, noting that it is a draft format. Ms. Doms has done an exceptional amount of work to create a curriculum review cycle and process and so it is in draft form, it could be modified based on needs. There was also, I wanted to point out, what was it, Ms. Doms? Oh, we talked about discussion in terms of aligning, so it would be 4K to 12 each year. 4K to 12 would get all math review or all ELA and we learned that DPI may make changes to standards for, say, the elementary level, but not necessarily changes at the high school level. So it would align by subject. District-wide may not always be possible, but would be ideal. I know there's a lot of great stuff you've shared. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, Ms. Doms, that you feel is helpful or important to point out. I feel this is really important and it got, it got pushed back a few times, so I don't, I want to make sure we focus on it well because we'll be coming back to it throughout the year.
You did a good job, Jill. So mainly it's our process as teachers and we're looking at some of our resources and standards in the process. That's an overarching skill that we're working on constantly to adjust to what the updated standards might demand of us and what we need to then purchase or maybe shift and what we're assessing our students on and how we meet those needs of the ever-changing needs of our today's student too. So it's a really important process and unfortunately that fell by the wayside some time ago for our district, particularly because of funding. And I don't think you're necessarily missing anything, but it is important for everyone to understand that it does have to be a little bit negotiable because sometimes funds or resources or time might not permit. So we're trying to be really conscientious, especially of our elementary teachers' plates because they have had a lot of time without looking at a lot of the materials and resources that they've had for many of their subject areas. And as you know, they do a great job of preparing for all subject areas for their students every day. So we have to take their time and consideration and thoughtfulness into that consideration too. So, no, you did a good job.
Thank you. I would also note one thing that did stand out to me and I think is helpful to just, you know, understand is we asked, what's the timeframe of, if, when DPI changes something in the standard, what's our timeframe to implement that? And so if something is changed in spring, that fall, the, like the forward exam, for example, would be updated to reflect those changes in the standards. So the expectation from DPI is that those changes were reviewed and implemented and students are ready to be tested on. So that's a really quick turnaround as well. Is that accurate?
It depends.
Okay. Sorry. Should have just, just stayed standing for the next three minutes.
They will give us timelines, so, but the timelines seem to extend quite often for DPI. So they might say, we're going to look at math standards. They solicit feedback from people on committees, from the state, and then they will say, okay, at this point you can expect the shifts in the math standards to be seen in the forward exam. It's usually not that quite quickly a turnaround, but they will let you know when that's expected. So like within a year to two years perhaps. Because teams have to go through this process of relooking at the shifts, adjusting their instructions so that we can meet the needs of what we're expected to do.
Thank you for clarifying. All right, and then we had the assessment calendar. So in creating the agenda, Ms. Doms and I talked about, we talk a lot about data and it seems overwhelming at times. And so can we break it down and be able to bring you back to it throughout the course of the year during board meetings in terms of where is the data collected, the why, and how we use it? So, gosh, I'm a visual person, I'm struggling thinking, it's not in front of me. But it outlines the, from grade level, fall, winter, spring, what assessments are being administered and that just staff and students, the grade level and the purpose and how it ties to district goals. So it's all very purposeful and intentional. So I'll admit, it's hard for me to follow at times of like this data is coming from where again and why. So that was really helpful and just kind of a roadmap to reference. Lastly, Ms. Doms also shared out on the data sources. So it's kind of like a cheat sheet on commonly referred to data sources like Infinite Campus, Skyward, oh, several of them that are straight in front of me, I'm sorry. But trying to, again, create a reference list so that way when we are referring to a data source, we can also tie in, what does that mean? Is it our data warehousing that we use district-wide? Is it specific to student data or things like that? But just trying to provide clarity because when we hear presentations or speak and have discussion, we're still learning what some of those things mean and how it ties in. And so it also just increases transparency too. So thank you for all of those resources. Is there anything I missed?
There was one resource on the website that is some of the assessments that we give, that we're required to by the state that includes things like the forward exam, ECT. And there was a comment that some of the links weren't working. So the problem with that was not the links, but somehow the transfer in the PDF to the website. So Dustin and I worked together and he worked a little magic and they're back working. So if you happen to reference that, that was another upload from that evening and it is on our website, you should be able to access all of the links though.
Thank you for that. I apologize for forgetting, missing that. The next curriculum and instruction meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 3rd.
Okay, I will say that that curriculum review was intense. I'm just not going to make any bones about it. But also thanks to Mrs. Doms because, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the first time that our district has set up something like this that you are implementing, walking through. Yes?
I do think other people had some review processes, but this includes the team's part in that as well.
Exactly, so thank you for all of your hard work. Any other questions for, yes, Angie?
Have you, did you come across any areas that you found where, like say where, like students have not been taught something that is on an assessment? And they go to take the assessment and they're like, this is the first time seeing this? Or they were just introduced, kind of like they were taught exactly for that assessment? Have you come across that?
I think that's really a lot of the work that our teachers do each and every day. You know, like there's part of having a balanced assessment system. That's why we have classroom-level assessments, benchmarks, and required assessments by the state. And sometimes there are pieces or gaps that we find and we have to make sure not only that we're reaching the content, but sometimes it's a matter of vocabulary. So specifically, if you think about math, you might use the word subtracting. If the test would ask a student to take away or reduce, small words like that can trip up students if they haven't heard those things before. So we're always looking at questions. Diving deeper into some of the state-level assessments that we have to give is a little bit of an art and a science because not always do we have access to all of the questions, but we can see the alignment of the standards. We haven't really been able to get that deep yet in all content areas because we're just starting the process of identifying our own standards, which we did about a year or so ago. So, yes, there are times that we find those gaps and students have or have not seen things. And sometimes the tests that we give are actually designed to meet a student's knowledge to frustration. So like our FastBridge benchmarking assessments, it's supposed to give you an adaptive test to get harder and harder to reach a point where you might not know something and that's okay because then we're knowing where your frustration point is and that will give you your score.
Thank you. I think too, when I listened to your question, I thought that came was discussion on, our district determines when we mastery of the skills. And so the collaborative time is beneficial for staff because it might be, we can look at data and then determine how intense, say, grade four discusses a topic or introduces a topic, but it'll be mastered in grade five. And so I think that ties into the collaborative importance too in terms of how to use data, what the results show in areas for support.
And also the importance of vertical alignment too between grade levels. So not just looking at what am I teaching as a fourth grade teacher, but how does that build from third grade and feed into fifth grade too? So there's a lot of important components.
I think Andy had a question also.
Do we have dual credit agreements with other schools besides NDC?
We do.
I don't believe we do.
Wait.
Like Stevens Point or Green Bay or?
So that would be through?
Early college credit?
Yep. That would be through early college credit. So they're going to that university and taking courses or taking them online through their early college credit program. And the Star College now is them going to tech college or taking one of the tech college classes online, but that's using other instructors. This agreement is that we're using our instructors, we're using their curriculum and delivering that to the students.
So how, how many kids do we have taking those early college credits?
You have a list, I believe.
We'll get it in October.
Oh, no, never mind, it is October, sorry. October 1st is the deadline for that list. Usually it's under 15 students.
So we'll see that list in October?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you'll see that list in October. But just a note for any students who wish to graduate early, I specifically talked to them about the early college credit and Star College now because I just want them to know of those opportunities.
So when they're taking those early college credits, who's paying for the credits?
District.
District.
Yep, and that's a escape thing.
Yep, okay.
Can you tell me if, do you know, like if we're just utilizing, like say, NTC for these early college classes, what percentage of those transfer into other tech colleges or four-year universities?
That I don't know. I know NTC has a lot of transfer agreements to a number of different universities, but I'm not sure how many classes that we teach are part of that.
Okay, that, that might be something worth looking into because I would think that, as a parent, I would want my students to make sure that they're taking classes that are going to actually transfer, you know, to as many schools as possible.
I know they have a lot of agreements where if they're going to NTC for two years, they're automatically guaranteed junior status and I know NTC gives them credits that we teach. So I'm assuming that that would be embedded in there, but I can definitely get into that.
Yeah, I think that would be worth while.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good, any other questions? Hearing no questions, all in favor of accepting the minutes from the curriculum instruction committee meeting? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Then it's carried. We will now move to item I, Building and Grounds Committee report. I'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for the Building and Grounds Committee meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Okay, Angie?
First off, I want to thank Kristin for leading the meeting for the first 15, 20 minutes as I was running late and couldn't get here. So thank you very much for doing that. And the first, we didn't have any public comment. The first thing that was up on the agenda that we talked about was the talk of YMCA coming to the community and Angie Close presented information to us and we talked about a number of things, how like, you know, that could be beneficial for after-school care, how it could help with daycare, various different community programs. I wanted to make clear that the district would not be funding the YMCA coming here. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear on that. This was, this is something totally different, but it would be possibly in partnership. So we would not be funding it. We also did have a conversation regarding a sports complex as well and maybe that could be in partnership with the YMCA as well as the school district and the benefits that would have on the community. This is, the YMCA is very much in the preliminary stage. Angie Close, Millinkly County Economic Development is working to establish, you know, what the community needs are and how this, this all can work out. They're not even defining funding yet or anything like that. So again, it's just preliminary and if anybody wants any kind of updates or any further information, I would direct you to talk to Angie Close at Millinkly County Economic Development to make sure you're getting the correct information versus hearsay on social media or, you know, friends chatter or anything like that. I would suggest just calling her office direct. Did you have anything to add, Kristin, or? Okay. Next, we talked about snowplow bids and Jake presented some bids and the only party that we got bidding from was Krieger and Signfest and that's coming to the board for approval later in this meeting. So that was kind of now a lot to talk about other than, than that. We, we also talked about having the, a group analyze all of our buildings and help us determine the best utilization for space. And so that also is on the agenda for us to possibly approve from Bray Architects. And again, that's just, we're looking at, you know, if we're utilizing our space the best possible way we can right now because I know, you know, especially the elementaries are really cramped and how can we possibly, you know, relieve some of that? So that's what, that's what the architects are going to determine for us. And then we also talked about the heating and cooling systems again. And Jake noted that the elementary schools were updated in 2017 to 2019. And we, we talked about the high school here and the fact that, you know, the havoc or their conditioning, just as on the inner block, you know, this portion of the school. And, and is it possibly could be helpful to mitigate that? We talked about it, so maybe funding that could, could be utilized. I think I sent that out to everyone. One possible grant that I found so far for that. And that was, that's it. We're going to continue that discussion as we can find funding and as we can, you know, come up with different ways to, to address those needs. Because our students and our staff should not have to go from one room that is freezing to one room that is super hot and, and keep doing that all day long. So, yeah, they need to have a comfortable place to go to school and work.
Okay. Any questions for Angie for the Building and Grounds Committee? Hearing no questions, all in favor of accepting the minutes from the Building and Grounds Committee? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And it carried. Item J, the People's Services Special Education Committee report. I will be looking for a motion to accept those minutes.
I move the board to approve the September 12, 2022 People's Services Special Education Committee minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Okay, Kristin?
So we met on Tuesday, September 13th. All three committee members were present as well as Dr. Dave Bardo, Andy Mary, along with. along with all administration and Heidi Seibert. We started out with the seclusion restraint report. This is something that needs to be presented annually. And Heidi differentiated between the two and explained that these are only used in rare incidents when imminent danger self or others is present. And she made very clear that our interpretation of imminent danger may not be the same as what those involved is. So, that report was given. And then, we also dove deep into a list of questions that were provided. Donna Smith initiated a activity for us all to get on the same page, to understand that behaviors come from different reasons and different people. The questions that we gave were only answered by the principals, so we did send some of the questions back to bring to their discipline committees. And we really had a thorough evaluation of most of the questions. We ran out of time, so some will carry forward. Big notes that it's all situational-based, and not, anything is mutually exclusive, mutually inclusive. And Trina did a great job of keeping track of what questions still remain. So, she made a list of those questions. Heidi has added some notes. And we're headed in a direction where we're gonna create a survey for all teachers to complete. This gives all teachers another opportunity to get involved. I know that they all have their committees that they can choose to be on, but that's not all, every teacher's company. So, we're gonna provide one more opportunity for everyone to get involved. So, we have a working document of what that survey will entail. And our next meeting is Monday, October 10th.
Okay, any questions for Kristen and the People's Services Special Education Committee?
I think we talked just a little bit about, when we do the survey, that the survey would come directly to the board, I believe. And we have to kind of figure those details out yet, but somehow that's gonna come directly to board members. So, just wanna mention that.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments, all in favor of accepting the minutes from the People's Service Special Education Committee? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and it carries. Number five, Board Action, Letter A, Consideration to Approve the Mission Statement. I'll be looking for a motion.
I, I move the board to approve the proposed mission statement as presented.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion is made, is there a second? Hearing no second, this will fall to the floor, and we'll move along to item B, Consideration to Approve the Vision Statement.
I move the board to approve the proposed vision statement as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Okay, any discussion? Once again, is there any discussion for the consideration to approve the vision statement?
I'll just share feedback on, from my perspective in terms of the, blinking on our committee, or what do we call it?
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning. I participated in some meetings, not all, due to other commitments as well. And I struggle with this agenda item, because I wasn't entirely aware of the goal of the meetings to come up with mission and vision statements. So, I struggle with this, because it tooks a few meetings before I understood the goal to be a potential revision of the mission and vision statement, bringing it to the board. And I think that may, I may not be the only one with that, that had that, I don't know if it's a misunderstanding or what, but it may have changed discussion or insight, knowing what the end goal is from the beginning. So, I'm sharing that as, you know, positive criticism, I guess, on areas that we can improve on the purpose and goals from the beginning when we engage the community.
Okay, any other discussion? Mary Kay, roll call vote, please.
Medic Nelson?
Yes.
Matt Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schreiber?
No.
Bardo?
No.
Pyette?
No.
Three, three.
We have a tie. We didn't talk about this, Mary Kay, help me out.
No, it's a motion.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Moving on to item C. Thank you, Andy, for helping me out there.
You're welcome.
Item C, Consideration to Approve the HRA Account Reclassification. I'll be looking for a motion.
I move the board classify the cash balance of the HRA account as committed fund balance, the purpose of the funds to be used for current and future HRA expenses.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
At our committee meeting, Tim made this presentation. We currently have $1,291,932.70 as a committed fund balance toward current and future HRAs' payments, and that would be designated as part of our seven-plus-million-dollar fund balance. And I'm in support of it.
Any other discussion? Hearing no questions or discussion, Mary Kay, roll call vote, please.
Matt Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bardo?
Yes.
Medic Nelson?
Yes.
Pyette?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Item letter E, consideration, I'm sorry, item letter D, 2022, 2023 Dual Credit Agreement. I'll be looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the 2022, 2023 Dual Credit Articulation Agreement with North Central Technical College as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mary Kay, roll call vote, please.
Mary?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bardo?
Yes.
Medic Nelson?
Yes.
Matt Miller?
Yes.
Pyette?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Item letter E, Consideration to Approve Three-Year Snowplow Bid. Looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the three-year snowplow bid from Krieger and Steinfest Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? As we already learned at the committee level, there were no other businesses that put a bid in. Krieger and Steinfest was the only business that put a bid in.
I do think, though, it's important to note, Jake, to say that they are dusting. It's not just carrying over year to year, so they are giving an us bid.
Good.
And I think also it's noteworthy to say that part of it is because not, many of the companies don't have the heavy equipment that the school actually needs for all the different buildings and everything. So, that's part of the reason why there was only one bid, because there isn't a lot of people that have that kind of capacity.
Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mary Kay, roll call vote, please.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bardo?
I abstain.
Medic Nelson?
Yes.
Matt Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pyette?
Yes.
And the vote carries. Item F, Consideration to Approve Education Capacity Analysis Proposal. Looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the proposal from Bray Architects in the amount of $4,000 for education capacity analysis.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to make a couple notes going for, if we go forward with this. There's been some discussion of different configurations that will help. So, if anyone comes across anything that they've seen or heard that we could look into. And then, also, going forward, if we can determine what problem we're trying to solve, because I think that that will lead us in a direction that will solve the problem, whether it's collaboration, behavior, what direction we're really going in.
Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mary Kay, roll call vote, please.
Bardo?
Yes.
Medic Nelson?
Yes.
Matt Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Pyette?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Item G, Consideration to Approve Overnight Travel. Looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve overnight travel for Inigo FFA to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, on October 25th through October 29th of this year, and girls varsity tennis subsectional in Eau Claire on October 3rd and 4th of 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the consideration to approve the two overnight travels, one for FFA and one for the girls varsity tennis? Let it be known by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, and it carries. Item letter H, Report of District New Hires. Looking for a motion.
I, I move the board to approve the following new hires. Maxine Schultz in world language, Erica Gilhouse in world language, Jessica Condo math, John Humphries, school psychologist, part-time, Jeremy Doucet, tech ed graphics, Skylar Bartles, administrative assistant, West Elementary, Kay Kilman, Yale instructional assistant, Patricia Bathke, special ed instructional assistant, middle school, Sherry Walrath, instructional assistant, North Elementary, Julie Wolf, instructional assistant, North Elementary, and Roseberry Courtney, lunch assistant.
Second.
And I apologize if I hacked somebody's name.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I know Julie's not here, but do you or?
I was just gonna ask, in the absence of Dr. Sprague, if Tim or Amy may have any other open vacancies that we may have? If not, if you don't have that, then I'll just send Dr. Sprague an email, and she'll let us know in an email. Amy's looking.
Yep. We have, we talked about earlier last spring, about targeting at the elementary level, and we have three elementary teaching positions that have been open since the spring. Amy, those are the three that I'm aware of. We may have some recent support staff ones that I think we have a retiree that's on the agenda tonight that will be open. I'm not aware of maybe a school social worker would be the other one.
Okay, we'll get that list confirmed from Dr. Sprague in an email whenever she gets back to the office.
Okay.
We'll not bother her during this time. Okay, folks? We had a motion and a second roll call vote of accepting the new hires, Mary Kay.
Medic Nelson?
Yes.
Matt Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bardo?
Yes.
Pyette?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Welcome to all of the new staff. And item I, Report of Donations, looking for a motion.
I move the board to accept the following donations. $100 from Samos surplus LLC for AHSFCA. $100 from the Hair Shack for AHSFCA. $100 from Brian Blink Insurance for, for AHSFCA. $100 from Cove and a Credit Union for AHSFCA. $100 from Persons of Inigo for AHSFCA. $200 from Linda and Lawrence Warman for AHS Drama in memory of Ron Blood. $200 from Nancy Blood for AHS Drama in memory of Ron Blood. $500 from Amy and Greg Sipple for AHS Drama in memory of Ron Blood. $600 from Maria Pregler for AHS Drama in memory of Craig Marks. $200 from Mogo Go Landscaping and Seal Coating for Phila Backpack, Phila Need, for a total of $2,200. The district also received 36 backpacks donated by Modern Woodmen of America for Phila Backpack, Phila Need program.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments? Besides the tremendous thank you for all of those donations from all the wonderful supporters of our school district. All in favor of accepting the donations as read, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And it's carried. Thank you very much for all the donations. Next, Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. I will make a note to everybody, all four committee meetings are now being recorded, not live, but they are being recorded. Thank you, Dustin, for setting that up and making that happen. And he posts them the very next day after the meeting takes place, or the next couple of days after, depending on his schedule.
The next day.
Okay, sounds good. So, they are recorded, and they are being posted on the school's website. If you miss a meeting, go take a look and see what's going on. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll be calling to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, turn the lights off.
Dustin? Ouch, sorry. I need to talk to you for just a second.